Call to order the regular meeting of the North Ring School Committee, six thirty-three.
Mr. Chair, if I could just mention something to Superintendent, it's not an issue, but there's some sort of alarm going off in one of those chemical preparations.
In the prep room?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know if we need to notify a-
No, I know what it is. Is it just a steady beep?
Yeah, yeah, just a- okay.
Thank you, Bill.
It's a good idea to bring that up ahead of time.
Yeah.
Be bad if there was a problem.
I'll take a walk out when I-
Okay.
Done with this one.
All right.
All right. First item of business is public input. Any public input?
None.
We have no students. Continued business, MSBA, SSBC update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few things to note for the committee and for the public. I'm anticipating actually a meeting tomorrow at two o'clock on a corrective action plan to address issues with the main drainage lines at the site of the middle high school. I don't have a lot of details for you right now, but I do know that there are some concerns that have been expressed by Gilbain Company to our project manager, who in turn has conveyed that to me. So there is a meeting tomorrow at two. There have been some tests that have- of the lines that have not gone as hoped. Some of the lines have failed in the testing, so I'm hoping that coming out of tomorrow's meeting that there will be a corrective action plan presented and, you know, we'll- those of us at the meeting will review that and, as necessary, make any changes that might need to be made in order to ensure that things are proper.
John, that meeting's in your office?
That meeting's in my office here, so two o'clock.
Point of clarification on that. That's not a collapse of the lines. That's a failure of the lines to be round circular and section.
I don't know, Cliff. It seems like there were a lot of failures-
I just- I don't know the details.
Based on what we hear, we don't know the details.
Yeah, I don't- I wouldn't think so, but your background certainly speaks to it more than mine does as far as an engineer, but yeah, I think tomorrow will be, you know, a revealing meeting. I'm hopeful that it's something that can be remedied, you know, quickly and simply. I just- I want to keep you up to date on the training, you know, the very complicated trainings, very complicated AV systems that we have in the middle high school, and they're great, but they do involve an awful lot in the way of training those of us that use systems in the distance learning lab, the performing arts center, the gymnasium and such. So we did have a very good training in this room, in the distance learning lab, back in the spring. We have scheduled a training session for the performing arts center for September twenty-first with the key players, the theater people from all levels, because the performing arts center does now get used by the elementary schools as well for our burgeoning theater program. So that training will take place, as I said, on September twenty-first with the next training to be in the gymnasium. The construction on the installation of the walkway to connect the baseball diamond to the turf field, that began last Wednesday. Michael and I, Michael Connolly and I went actually, we visited all three elementary schools today, and on our way from the batch held it back to our offices here, we pulled in at the field area and took a look at the walk. I think it looks great. I think they did a very nice job. It's a nice wide walkway.
Is it done?
It's done, yeah.
And that's- so that's for handicap access from that parking lot. People can go right down there and then it's a flat surface, basically.
It's a very gradual manner.
Right, gradual. It's a gradual.
It's got a nice curve to it.
Right, it meets ADA requirements in terms of slope, et cetera.
Right.
Great.
So, and again, it's access on that side of the- there's always the access on the other side.
Correct.
From the other side, too.
Correct.
But they did a very nice job. They actually paved the area that from when the- going back several years ago when the turf field was installed, there was an area, oh, I don't know, it might have been fifteen by fifteen, something like that, yeah, of gravel that had never been paved. They connected the track area to the existing pavement. They paved that. I thought it looked really nice there.
It did. It looked nice.
He did a little raking out a landscaping along the edges of where they put it, but that's no big deal.
One question, and maybe there's a disconnect here. Were they also going to clean the-
The brick walkway?
The brick walkway?
It's funny, I don't know that they're responsible for that. I can tell you that when, and Michael, who was with me last week, when we met with the town administrator, Marty Tilton, for another matter down there, a positive matter, we talked, Marty and I had a kind of a side conversation about that walkway and pressure washing it.
Right.
And he even had some ideas about potentially putting a, I'll say like a kind of a mulch bed along the run on the side that is between the baseball diamond, just to kind of dress it up a little bit. I think we're kind of waiting until, you know, construction gets done, but I think that any kind of cleaning of that-
So we'll do that.
Is going to be done internally.
And the whole grass area because of the summer, just a mess down there.
That area, that baseball area, that's something that, yeah, that'll have to be addressed where they dug up for the irrigation system.
Seed and such.
Yeah, but I mean-
It will need some work.
Without rain, we're not going to be able to get anything. But it needs to be, I think, dug up and leveled.
I agree, loomed and kind of, you know, seed put downs.
Yep.
And then the last item, I just, you know, we are continuing to address punchless items. You know, there are some remaining outstanding items that need to be addressed. And project manager, Gilbain representative, some of you will remember Oliver that was part of the- he's back.
Yep.
He's working here a few days a week, and it's been very, very helpful, along with Chip from Durham Widdies. That work continues, and we have a building committee meeting tomorrow, tomorrow night, so.
Mr. Chair, a couple of questions. Cliff? A couple of questions. John, I know last week Iamonte was here. Have they replaced those coils yet, or is that in process?
Good question. It's supposed to be done tomorrow.
Okay.
The coils were received. The gentleman was here with Joe DeSantis from PMA, and I want to say I had a conversation with them on Thursday. It was either Wednesday or Thursday of last week.
Okay.
And they informed me that they hope to do that work tomorrow.
The other question is, initially, we were told that we were going to have to wait until next spring before the trees, et cetera, replace. And then I heard that they're actually going to go out and mark them now. Are they going to be replaced now, or are we still waiting in the spring to replace all the dead trees?
I don't know that I have exactly the answer that you want, just only because I don't know that I have all of the information. But I did, I met with Oliver that I was just talking about last, from Gilbain. I met with him last week about the landscaping that's going on around the campus now, and there were a number of shrubs, there were a lot of those spreading use in the beds at the gymnasium entrance and out front, the main entrance area, that I asked him to go out with me. He took pictures of them. We identified twenty-four that he allowed, I'll say he allowed me to have our grounds people remove now so as not to wait until, so that they could be, you know, I think the idea is that they're leaving things in right now that need to be replaced, so they know what to replace and where to replace them. But they were so unsightly that-
And they're right out front there, right?
Right, and I wanted them out. They were at the two main entrances, so he worked with me on that. There were twenty-four shrubs and a tree, a tree outside the principal, the high school principal's office, that he took pictures of, communicated to Gilbain about his granting us to have them removed now. He recorded what was there. And he did in that email to his superior identify that he, you know, thought it would be nice if those could be replaced before the opening of school, but if not, you know, as soon as possible. So I'm telling you that it's a little bit of a long-winded answer, but I think it gets to the point of, I think they're looking to replace what they can replace now, but I don't know that to be a hundred percent true. But he was certainly going in that direction for the twenty-four shrubs in the one tree that we identified together.
And the last thing, just want to commend you and Michael, and also actually the committee for having the foresight to put into the budget that line item that enabled us to hire an outside resource to come in and do the landscaping. I think that the campus looks really good right now. It's going to look great for the start of school, and once we get that on a schedule, we won't have a situation again where, you know, the weeds are growing up so high that, you know, the place doesn't look, it looks unsightly. I don't think that'll happen again now that we have this contractor in place, and I think it looks great.
I do think it got, you know, truth be told, it did get a little bit of ahead of us with the weeds, but we kind of knew that was going to happen, but we were trying to be cognizant of the bottom line and what we spent for the summer.
We had to wait for the new fiscal year to start.
So it was a combination of things. I think it was that. It was our being conservative and not wanting to do too much in July and then having to come back again and do it in August so things would look good for the opening of school when everyone is here. But I think it's fair to say we are committed to it looking good all the time. I was very happy that the high school principal, Mr. Lepret, coordinated with students. They did a community service day, and they removed about fifteen large green trash bags of weeds from out front in the kind of the plaza area, the pavilion area. And I think that kind of thing you're going to see more of. I mean, it's a win-win. The students are in need of community service projects, but it also helps us, you know, and I think it's, you know, it's a little bit of student pride in the building, too. And so I think it's a nice effort that we're going to try to build.
Great idea here to pull that one forward, yeah.
Again, I commend you, too. I think it looks great out there in spite of Gilbain. They've done a really good job, and they're continuing to work on it, too, so it looks really nice.
It's great around the trees.
I think you'll be really thrilled by the end of this week. I asked the landscape at a time thing so that he would finish prior to the Labor Day weekend, so when we come back in full on Tuesday. And obviously, work is going on with our- this also allowed our internal people, our two employees, to work and concentrate to the three elementary schools.
Right.
So they're all, all of the campuses, the campus here and the three elementary schools are all getting the traditional sprucing up, if you will.
There's a contractual relationship going on there with Gilbain, which they're supposed to be doing that at this point. They're still supposed to be doing that.
I think there's some question as to how much they owe us under the contract for the cleanups and for the grass.
The weeding is, they say they-
You may be right. You may be right, yeah.
It hasn't been accepted yet.
No, I know.
For that piece of it, absolutely, that's-
Not sure they'd be required to do the mulching and the edging and stuff, but yes, for some of the-
Things that we add in are on our account.
Right.
But they need to be brought to heel on that tomorrow night.
Right, and they will be.
That they owe us. All right, I guess that's-
No, one last thing, finally, the painting that's been done. I don't know if we talked about that. The schools look great. We've added some color, the middle school, main hallways, some of the cafeteria, the main street, the administrative offices, district offices, and I'd like to see that continue, and I think we plan to continue that in the future.
Again, not to, I don't want to, you know, bog down things, but yeah, ideally, what we did, and again, I would want you all to be aware and the public to be aware that that was all within budget.
Right.
We reduced our normal summer painting staffing and used the money in that reduction to fund a professional painter coming in and all, you know, so kind of cost neutral, if you will. And again, it allowed our reduced painting crew to concentrate on the three elementary schools, and they did that.
But it looks great.
It does. It looks nice. Thank you. No, we were very pleased, and the goal would be to do that over the course of the next, say, two or three summers, a similar type project with other areas in this building to, as you said, to add some color. Great. I just, real quick, I don't know, were you going to speak about capital improvements tonight, or?
It's on the allotment for the next meeting, but I can certainly speak to.
I just, I think the Hood School paving project was completed last week, and it looks really nice. So it's part, you might remember, is part of one of the capital improvement initiatives. So, Michael, that was part of our little field trip today was to go and look at that.
It came out really, really nice.
It did.
I think we addressed all the objectives of the CIPC proposal and-
That was done by our DPW?
No, this one was done by EJ paving, the town contractor.
So the original one was done by?
Correct, year one phase.
Yeah, the case two was done by the contractor and-
We had some concrete work done. You might remember that there were some frost heaves that would cause that brick, that concrete plaza at the Hood School to something that were, they were squares and they would be uneven. We had some granite curbing in that area reset to kind of avoid all of that now. We're hopeful that that will accomplish that, but, and Wayne is working, Wayne Hodecker is working this week for a company to come in and do the striping of the lines and such that need to be done, but somewhat building related, but a little bit off the MSBA report.
Next item on the agenda is new business. We have a first reading of policy EEC, food services management, student meal assistance, and-
Yeah, I can provide some context to the purpose of this policy and the meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago with the policy subcommittee. So in large part, as a result of the DESE coordinated program review, you know, they certainly, you know, that visit that they had last January and that we kind of went through some of the results and findings of that review, one of their recommendations was that all districts kind of formalize in the form of a school committee policy their student mail account charging policy. So they did sort of, we had a procedure that in place that we were using and communicating for the last number of years, and it was sort of their recommendation that we sort of take that to the next level and bring that policy, you know, to the school committee for adoption. Many districts have done something similar over the last number of years, and the policy that's kind of before you tonight, in a lot of ways, comes out of those conversations with the DESE, as well as both myself and Food Service Director Anna McGovern, did really feel like it was time to kind of take this policy and the practices that we've been really operating under for the last number of years, kind of put them more on paper, kind of provide more context and detail to what those are, and bring them, you know, before the committee, which is what we're doing this evening. The policy tonight really was derived by looking at not only our own practices, but also looking at policies and procedures and best practices in about a dozen other school districts that we did look at, all of which have language very similar to the policy that's before you this evening. We did make several changes and really tried to customize and tailor the best practice procedures that we reviewed to really come up with a policy and language that would work best in North Reading and what we were, and how we were currently operating. And I think the chief objective of this policy is to, number one, ensure that we have a consistent mail account procedure policy of when we unfortunately do have situations where accounts go into the rear, that we are consistent in what our communication is out to parents and how we're going to go about collecting student mail charges, as well as just to ensure that all students across the district are treated fairly in a consistent manner. So I think this policy accomplishes that. We felt very highly that it was, you know, very, I guess strongly, that it was important that students do not go without a mail, and we don't overly identify students that may not have, you know, lunch money on that day, and I think the policy clearly speaks to that, that under no circumstance will a student be denied a lunch. And I think we also felt that we have a certain responsibility and financial due diligence to ensure that we're, you know, timely notifying families that do owe lunch money and accounts that are in the negative, and that we are, you know, take a responsibility to collect those funds that are due to the district. So I believe this policy accomplishes those two major objectives, and we certainly tried to find a balance between providing, not denying students lunches, and as well as putting the appropriate procedures and controls in place to collect the funds that are due to the district. Essentially, what the policy does, it sets a mail account cap across the district of about three mails per student. So at a type A lunch at the elementary level is two seventy-five. At the secondary, middle school and high school level, it's three dollars. So we're operating very closely to between, you know, an eight and ten dollar amount, a threshold or cap, or count cap. And that is very common practice across many of the districts that we looked at. It may range between, anywhere between one and three at the secondary level and three and five at the elementary level. So it was a common best practice and a procedure that was in place. And, you know, so we feel that it's a responsible policy. We feel like it's the right thing to do, and the time has come to kind of bring this type of procedure in front of the committee for consideration. But I think in our meeting a couple of weeks ago with the policy subcommittee and Superintendent Bernard, I think we felt comfortable with some minor changes of what the language was here, you know, captured here. So I think, any other questions or?
Yeah, I just think the key thing is, we need to have this in our policy handbook. We don't have a policy on this now. We need to have it in writing. It needs to be codified so parents know students will never be denied a lunch. If you're behind on your account, here's how you need to go about paying what, the amount you're behind, and other things such as you can call and put a hold on your account for certain items. You can, so it spells out basically everything a parent needs to know about the meal program here, the lunch program. And I'm assuming this applies, will this apply to the breakfast program also?
It would, yep. For all males.
Okay.
Breakfast and lunch.
So I think Janine and I, we did request some language changes at our subcommittee meeting, but I think we're fine with the overall policy and would recommend approval of a first reading.
Julie?
So besides being in the handbook, will we be providing this information along with kind of the start of school information that our lunch program offers?
You know, I think once adopted, I think we can certainly-
Or tailor some of the important pieces to kind of go along with-
I think we could blast that out.
Yeah, I would blast out the whole thing.
I think that makes sense.
And I think also, a lot of new parents to, could be, you know, kindergarten parents, I get a lot of questions about how do we go about setting up an account? What's my student's password? So I think if we could reiterate those important pieces of information as well in that email blast, because then they're, you know, calling school secretaries, what's my password? And I think that would streamline some of that, those questions as well.
We might want to do that sooner, because for the start of school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That sounds like a great idea.
If the committee adopts this, it wouldn't be until September twelfth-
Sure.
For second reading, so maybe just those few days ahead of time.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that. I think if-
That might be helpful to have, like, for next week.
Message to families. And I think in a lot of ways, I think, I mean, these are procedures in terms of us using the My School Bucks, you know, account to notify families on a weekly basis, on a regular occurrence, when they're in the negative, and there are low balance alerts that the system automatically generates and alerts parents, too. So I think a lot of those communication procedures and how we operate is really not much different. It's just now it's formalized in a written policy.
Mike, I think it's almost important to, also important to note that we don't have a major problem here where there are-
Correct, yeah.
Thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars not being paid. It's a minor problem, but we just need to have it as a policy so everybody understands it, right?
Correct.
It needs to be formalized. That's all.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add to it, the newsletter that I sent last week, that I know some of you have seen it already. I gave you a copy tonight. And Dan, if you don't mind, if, for the televised audience, there is, Michael did in his section of the newsletter, put a little in about food service news. So in the interim, before we get another message out, it might be helpful if people just look there, because there is a link to the My School Bucks-
My School Bucks.
Okay.
System, and that might just, if somebody's curious now.
Because student, correct me if I'm wrong, students are already enrolled. Parents don't have to enroll them. It's just how to access that information.
That's correct.
Right.
Yeah, we can absolutely develop-
I think that would be very helpful.
Informational handout.
Sometimes if it gets overwhelming, you can just pull the salient points and just, it might make it easier for people to-
Well, just because, you know, the school secretaries are trying to look up information and, you know, it's overwhelming at times.
Any further discussion? Motion?
I move to approve for first reading a new policy EEC, food services management, student meal accounts.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. All right, next item on the agenda is the fiscal two thousand eighteen budget development calendar. Superintendent?
Very good, thank you. So similarly to as in years past, and we seem to be talking about the FY eighteen and the budget process, you know, earlier and earlier each year, or the budget development process, but essentially, step one in that process is really to agree on a schedule and a calendar, and the dates and calendar and process in place, or the calendar that's before you tonight for consideration, is very similar to the process we've had in the past in terms of key dates of this process to guide the development of the fiscal two thousand eighteen budget. As in the past, the process would start with reviewing the district's large capital plan, so September would sort of be devoted, the two meetings in September would be devoted to review of the large capital plan with the district presenting the large capital plan on the twelfth, having time to review, ask questions, and then coming back for additional discussion and hopefully approval at the second meeting in September on the twenty-sixth, because the CIPC's calendar in terms of requests from major departments due into the CIPC will stay the same on, by September thirtieth. So it'll be important that we kind of jump right into large capital and have a couple of meetings to discuss and vote the large capital plan. Also, as part of the beginning of the budget development process, we need to issue our fiscal eighteen budget goals. So we felt September twenty-sixth is a time we've done that in the past, so we would review what those fiscal eighteen budget goals are, again, you know, should need to be for fiscal eighteen, have that discussion, and if we're all in agreement, we could issue goals on that evening. I'll come back at the first meeting in October and vote the goals. Then in October, October one, we'll have our official October one enrollment count. So the October seventeenth meeting would be an opportunity for us to present and revise enrollment projections based on the new October one counts. So I think enrollment always plays a huge role in the budget process, and, you know, the mid to the end of October would be the time to discuss enrollment. Internally, principals and directors are given their budget request sheets at the end of October every year. That gives them several weeks, or, you know, three to four weeks to discuss their requests and meet with me and have conversations about fiscal eighteen, and then those requests would be due into the business office just before the Thanksgiving break. That allows the months of December and January for us to be building drafts and having those further conversations with the administrative team, with the finance planning team, as we prepare to further develop the fiscal eighteen budget. I felt a meeting in February, perhaps we could discuss some of the highlights of the preliminary state budget, because that would be due to be released this year at the end of January, beginning of February. So perhaps before we were to present publicly our preliminary budget, we could kind of have that conversation about, you know, the state budget and kind of see how that might, you know, may play into the local budget and where we're at, what the drivers may be. On March thirteenth, we would present our preliminary budget, similar to what we have done in the past. At that point in time, the budget would be a public document. The budget books would be released, and it would be time to have our first budget workshop around, on March twenty-third, before the public hearing, which would happen on April tenth, similar to what it has in the past, that first week in April. What's different this year on this calendar, we've actually penciled in a date already for what we, if necessary, a budget workshop number two. The last two years, I feel like a second budget workshop has been necessary. Once the public hearing has taken place, there's a lot of discussion, a lot of conversation at that hearing, and I think it has helped to kind of come back together, hear that input from the public, from the community, make any changes and so forth, and then come back at the next meeting and discuss those changes. We would be due to present the recommended budget to the finance committee at the end of April, and then at the May first meeting, we would need to vote the fiscal eighteen budget so we can submit to the town in time for the town meeting warrant, and town meeting this year is scheduled for June fifth. So I think, you know, this is very similar to what we've seen in the past. I don't know, are there any questions?
Mr. Chair? I mentioned this before, and I don't know what the proper form is or if this would make sense. I've always felt that it would be good to have a school committee member sitting in on some of the budget meetings if you meet with the whole administrative council, because we, the school committee member might hear something coming from a principal, say, at the Hood School. They think they should have X. And sometimes we don't get all those because they're filtered through you. And I don't know, that's why I'm saying, I don't know if this is proper or not. To at least have a school committee member there to hear, because we don't hear all, so we're kind of, in a way, we're out of the loop in terms of all of the needs. You tell us. You don't show them to the, you say there, believe me, there are a lot more things that were requested. But are there meetings where a school committee representative could sit in and just hear what all of the requests are, or see all of the requests that come in before you whittle them down?
I think you have it. I think you have it in the strategic plan. That's largely what's going to drive our conversation this year.
But aren't there things that each principal would-
In the way of personnel or resources?
Personnel or-
Not beyond that.
I think it's the strategic plan that really drives the personnel requests, and typically is what we'll see come forward. I mean, what happens at these, you know, administrative meetings is there's further discussion and support around civic needs.
But I mean, we hear, for example, the high school principal asks for four new positions, and, you know, we added one and a half or whatever.
Yeah.
We don't know what those four positions are that the high school principal is looking for, because we don't get them here.
The Board of Selectmen, I mean, what they're doing during their budget processes, they bring in every department head on a schedule-
Right.
-before the Board of Selectmen at a public meeting, and they make their presentation to the board as to what their budget needs are. So that's a little, obviously, a little different than what we do.
Exactly, that's-
And I'm not necessarily saying I support those suggestions, but that's how they do it with the Board of Selectmen, so.
Yeah, that's a different process, but that's kind of where this is coming from, where, you know, they get to actually hear from the department. I guess we're hearing from you as the quote department head, right?
Yeah.
And then the Selectmen question them, you know, they ask them questions.
We're hearing from one department.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want them coming in here and being questioned. I'm just wondering if it would be helpful to have a school committee member sit in, that's all. I'm just wondering if it would be helpful to have a school committee member to prep, sit in, that's all. So something to consider. And we don't have to decide it tonight, just something to consider.
Sure. I do think, I think, Michael, I'm sorry too, because you did give, I think we amended the school committee meeting schedule. I think that October 17th date is now, should be October 11th. Because the town meeting date.
Oh, that's town meeting is the 17th, right?
I think we scheduled a meeting for Tuesday, the 11th.
Yeah, town meeting is the 17th.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
So is that when you want to do?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be.
That's a Tuesday night. The day after the Columbus Day holiday.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Sorry.
That's fine.
Any, uh, any further discussion? I guess not. That's, sounds like a plan.
As revised, okay. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is an appointment to the North Shore Education Consortium Board of Directors. And, uh, you want to?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, yeah, it's, um, you may recall, this is an annual appointment that the, um, member communities make through their school committees, um, to have representation on the boards. I'm, I'm saying floral because the, the next item on your agenda is a similar request for an appointment, um, to the Board of Directors at the SEEM Collaborative. So I'm, I'm happy to serve. So if the, if the board so wishes, they can appoint me for another one-year term, and I would gladly serve for both, um, both positions.
Is there a motion?
I move to appoint, uh, Mr. Bernard to be our, do we have two motions or one motion?
He probably should do two.
I move to appoint, uh, Mr. Bernard as a representative for a one-year term on the North Shore Educational Consortium Board of Directors.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor?
Aye.
All who's opposed?
And I move to appoint Mr. Bernard.
Unanimous.
Move to appoint Mr. Bernard to serve as a North Shore representative for a one-year term on the SEEM Collaborative Board of Directors.
Second.
Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All who's opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
And now we have routine matters. Minutes for July 25th Goals Workshop?
Move to approve the minutes as written for the July 25th, 2016 Goals Workshop.
Second.
Any further discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All who's opposed? Motion is unanimous. Uh, minutes for July 25th Open Session?
Move to approve July 25th Open Session Meetings as written.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor?
Aye.
All who's opposed? Unanimous. Um, minutes of July 25th Executive Session?
Move to approve July 25th Executive Session as written.
Second.
Further discussion?
Actually, as, uh, with, I should say with one edit, sorry. On the third line in the second paragraph, it says particular focus on one creating longer, I think we meant larger, more detailed signs, not longer.
Uh-huh.
Am I correct? So I approve with that, um, move to approve with that correction.
The second still hold?
Yes.
It's the third line under the second paragraph under the, should say larger, not longer.
Any further discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
All who's opposed? Unanimous. Uh, budget update? Mr. Conley?
Yes, thank you. This evening I did have one item, um, that I wanted to discuss, um, regarding P cards and a potential, you know, P card program and what that is and how that may benefit, um, the North Reading School District. And I wanted to update the full committee that at the finance planning team meeting held on August 9th, um, this, the potential of the district pursuing a P card purchasing program and what those benefits could be was discussed. And essentially, this is something that, um, I've been researching for. I would say for the last, you know, several months, getting back to almost last summer. Um, I've started the research through my affiliation with Masbo, Mass Association of School Business Officials and, and so forth. And my conversations with other colleagues who have brought the P card program to their districts, and they've, they've seen it with some success and they've, it's, I think, um, you know, the, the North Reading is a district that could start to benefit from a P card purchasing program. And essentially what it is, is it's essentially a form of a debit or credit card where the district would have the ability to set limits and controls on each card and use that card for specific purchases. Um, it ultimately provides another payment option. And, and used in certain circumstances, it could help streamline the, the purchasing process. And essentially, all of the existing controls and purchasing procedures and purchase order process that's in place today in the district would continue to be the same. So we're not changing procedures, we're not, um, what, ultimately what the program does is it does, uh, require essentially another payment option. And where I see North Reading potentially benefiting from a program like this would be in the after-school enrichment programs and, uh, specific student activity programs and foreign travel purchases. Where, um, we have a lot of staff involved and maybe working with vendors that don't accept a purchase order. And what we're seeing is a lot of, uh, employee reimbursements being as a requirement to, to bring that these after-school enrichment programs, the, the supplies that it needs. And, you know, this would be a program that I've seen some area districts, you know, the Reading Public Schools, the Maskinomet Regional High School, Middle School, used with success in these after-school enrichment programs and student activities. Um, you know, the idea would be to start very small, you know, keep it controlled, only use it for, for certain programs, for certain staff members, eligible staff members, and still require purchase orders to be, you know, processed. Um, but it would allow that additional level of flexibility. It would reduce, uh, the need for us to have several store account cards with local vendors. Um, you know, that would, it would streamline that process. It would cut back on employees, in some cases, hesitating to get involved with being instructors in these after-school programs because they just don't want to maybe upfront some supplies and, and purchases. So, uh, I've had several conversations with the elementary school principals, start dating back to last year, on some of their challenges and their struggles to, I guess, you know, get staff involved. And this was one, um, item that has, has come up. And I do feel that, um, you know, a P card program could be beneficial for, for North Reading. So it's something that I've been involved with. This program in particular that would be discussed was chosen because Masbo, um, which is the Mass, you know, Association of School Business Officials, has already done the procurement and the research and actually chosen this program and actually partnered as a collaborative purchasing agreement with this, this particular program that allows mass school districts to kind of sign on and then be a participant in this program. It does require Board of Selectmen kind of approval because there's a, in order to get involved, there's a, there's a series of, um, steps involved in that process, one of which is the Board of Selectmen agreeing to it and signing kind of a resolution, um, that they would agree to be a, kind of a P card member. Um, so I have had extensive conversations with Liz Rock, Town Finance Director. And I think she's, you know, comfortable for us to move forward. Um, it was discussed at the finance planning team held on August 9th. And their recommendation was that I make a short presentation, similar to what I'm doing this evening, um, and ask for their endorsement and sign on into the program. Um, so I guess, you know, this evening I'm looking for, um, you know, endorsement by the, by the full school committee that would allow the, the steps to move forward with bringing a P card program to North Reading. And, you know, I, I do think it's beneficial, and I, I think there would certainly be controls and procedures in place. And, um, it, it has some benefits. There would be a re, the, the district would receive rebates based on the volume of purchasing ultimately used in the program. And, um, you know, you would have access to an online, you know, portal to sort of review all the transactions. So it's, I've had a lot of conversations, and it can be used, um, with, with some, you know, success. And I think it's, you know, a time for us to consider pursuing it.
Do, do we need a vote on that or just, um?
I think, I think we're looking for a, not necessarily a vote, Mr. Chairman, but just a, um, a blessing, if you will. We, we'd like to move forward with this.
You need a consensus.
Census.
I think that's a, yeah, that's a fair.
Before, so what source of cash is the card tied to? Because it's going to be used for different budget areas.
Yep.
So how do you tie a source of cash to it?
So it would be, it would have to, it was, it's all going to be connected to our general ledger. So it's, it's, if it's being used in an after-school program, you know, the encumbrance would have to happen through our general ledger, through our revolving account.
But I, my question is to a person, you said it could be used at some retail stores instead of the, you know, say, Office Depot card or whatever, right? So if, if someone uses it at the Office Depot to buy supplies, when they present the card, is the money coming out of a bank account somewhere or how is that, how is it working?
Yeah, it would be, I mean, the money would come out of a bank account with the town. But it's going to be, it's going to be tied.
And then we would reimburse the town?
Well.
See, I'm trying to understand, it, I, I think it sounds fine, but it makes me nervous when we add another way for people to spend money.
Yeah. No, it's true, it's fair. And it's been, I think that's the biggest, um, you know, challenge. But I, I think it can be controlled in, in a, in a small environment at first for specific purchases where it wouldn't be, and as long as, to me, I'm comfortable as long as all staff involved continue to follow the purchase order process. And they would encumber POs in advance, similar to what they do now, to ensure that the, the funding is available.
And is the town doing this too? Are they going to use this card or?
Liz doesn't, I think she doesn't see the town using it.
Okay.
Right away, but, you know, down the road, it's, it's possible.
I, I just, I, I heard what you said, I just have a hard time envisioning its use. But, you know, in general, if you're, you know, you're overseeing it, I, I'm okay with it, but it just makes me a little.
Sure.
So besides the Reading and Masko, I mean, I assume there's other districts that.
Yeah.
Used it successfully?
Throughout New England, there's 850 school districts. And I think there's over, over 40 Massachusetts school districts that use it in some, some fashion.
Who provides the card? Why is it the P card? What is, is it a government agency or is it a private bank or?
It's a private bank. It's a bank.
Okay.
That has partnered with Masbo who, um, would, so town, it's really, the town has to kind of agree to sign on because it's, it would be them opening up the bank and, and having that relationship, so.
So, so the card is more, more or less like a, um, uh, school department, um, debit card?
Yes, yeah, that's it.
And you, you, you have, you're authorizing certain individuals to.
Correct.
Use that debit card.
Correct.
In their purchase.
Yeah.
Rather than put it on a, on the tab and have the town, the town cut a check later.
Correct. Correct.
So it's an advantage to the merchant.
Ultimately, less checks the town is cutting, could be less, um.
Doing electronically what's now done manually.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah.
So like I said, and we would, if, you know, if endorsed and if it proceeds, and I don't see us even using this until a year from now, but it's going to take a while to kind of move through these channels. This is, this is really step one. But I think, you know, it would be something we would start very, very small, certainly, you know, trial it, see how it works and, um, you know.
Control the, the kind of things that are, are done with it.
Right.
Yeah, I would just ask that if it's going, next year by you mean fiscal 18, not fiscal 17?
Correct.
That you come back at some point and give us, for example, will there be a hundred dollar limit on the card? Or is the card maxed out at $5,000? Or, in, in the whole process of, are we paying back the town? Will, will we transferring money to that account from the school budget? I'm just trying to figure out how that works, that's all. So I'd like a little more detail at some point, just.
Yeah.
But I, I'm, in general, I'm.
So I mean, essentially, the town finance director would, and the town treasurer would ultimately control the program. That's why it's kind of a Board of Selectmen endorsement. Because they would, they would set those parameters. And maybe they would obviously work closely with, you know, myself to, to set the, the limits on each card and the controls. And you can essentially set specific vendors, assign specific vendors for use on, on, on the card as well. But it can be, it can, there is a lot of controls you can put in place, which I think is partly the why Masbo kind of has endorsed this particular program, because of the, the flexibility of, of setting those limits on each card that, that you have.
Michael, you'd have direct access to the usage of the card?
Correct.
So that you wouldn't be relying on the town to tell you that, to monitor the, the use? You'd, you'd have direct access?
Correct. That's correct.
And would it be, you know, when, you know, a, a time presents itself? It could be maybe when an enrichment program is, you know, in the works.
Correct.
You could have, you know, two cards or one card for the person in charge that you would issue them. Could that card then come back to you? Or how, or would that person hold on to that card?
So they would sign out the card for that, you know, the way we've.
Right.
For that, for that program.
Sure.
Use the card, have, you know, turn the card back into the business office, sign out, sign in. You know, what we're, what we're doing really, what I see is always doing is, is streamlining the, you know, the eight to, to 10, you know, store account cards that we've had to go and sign, you know, store accounts.
Sure.
You know, to, to receive the ability to go do that on a tax-exempt, you know, status. It would allow us to kind of have that one card available, um, for these cer- certain programs and purchases.
Instantly establishes the tax-exempt, uh, position.
Correct.
The merchant gets their.
By signing on, correct.
Action right away.
Yeah, and there's no cost to the, there's no cost to the roll, there's no cost.
Electronically.
There's no fees.
Processed.
And it could allow some additional, I mean, small, I'm sure, but I think there's, I think Masko told me they got five or $6,000 in a rebate from the use of the, the program. And that could help, you know, it'd be addition, some small amount of additional revenue as well.
So is there a competition out there for this card where you can get a little better rebate from some other?
But it's, it's been out there for a number of years. I remember back in 2007, I think they first kind of rolled it out and, and is when the, I first heard of a, a P card program. And so it's been, you know, a lot, it's been kind of slow to really pick up steam, but it, it really has the last few years. And I think, I think we could see it helping in some certain situations here.
Does the superintendent recommend it?
I do. I do. I was, I was, I'm glad Michael mentioned about the potential for some revenue to be generated too. And this is a convenience factor here as well for people. It helps to expedite purchases that we might need on a short term, so I do, I do recommend.
All right, so we need a consensus. Julie, are you?
Yes.
On board? Mel?
Okay.
That's fine.
Janine?
Yes.
You got it?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
If Michael doesn't show up for work for a few weeks.
Or the next car.
Postcard.
If the next car is. The postcard from the Bahamas. All right, stepping.
Thank you.
You have a lot of new staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we do, we do. I have a list in your packet, it's actually, it's, it's, uh, it's outdated already. We hired a paraprofessional today, um, at the little school. There was one remaining part-time, uh, paraprofessional position. So, uh, in your packet is, um, exclusive of that one addition, and one position still to be hired. Um, a, a long-term substitute position for a speech language pathologist, also at the little school. Um, this is the full complement of, of new staff, um, for 2016, '17. We had, um, a very nice two-day, um, new educator orientation program, a kind of our annual orientation program last week. It was very, very good. And I want to publicly acknowledge Dr. Daly for, for his work. That's kind of his, um, his, one of his projects for the summary, does a very nice job with it. And, um, all of the administrators attended, um, on the first day to introduce themselves and to spend a little time with our new staff. They came back for lunch. Mr. Webster, um, who traditionally comes, um, also showed up on Wednesday. Mel, thank you for being there. It's nice to have the committee represented. And, um, so I'm very, very pleased with, um, what looks to be a very good, um, and, and talented and spirited group of people joining our equally talented and spirited veteran staff for a good, um, good start to the, to the new school year, Mr. Chairman.
Good.
One quick question. There's a huge group of special educators.
Yes, there are.
So is this because of the new positions or because?
It's a combination. No, it's, it's, it's a combination, yeah. It's, um, I can tell you that, um, there is a, a special ed opening that was a transfer within the district from the middle, the high school to the middle school. There was a transfer from the middle school to one of our elementary schools. There were a number of new positions added as part of the budget. Um, there was at least one resignation in special education at the middle school. Someone who, um, received a leadership edu, in education, a leadership, leadership position in another district that created a vacancy. And I think that those are, I'm looking at my notes here, but are all of the reasons for, um, the, the number of special education. But you're right, there are, um, there are a number of, of, of new positions in special education at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school.
John, I see a new school psychologist at the high school.
Yes. Yes.
I don't see one at the middle school where we-
The, the person that was in that position at the high school transferred to the middle school.
Okay, that did happen.
Right, so that filled the posi-, the new position at the middle school-
Middle school, okay.
And we hired someone new for the high school.
Okay.
Anything further on that?
The paninis were great at the lunch.
Yes.
They were really good.
Really good.
That's the primary reason Mel goes.
No, 'cause Anna McGovern made the John's panini, and I said, "I'm gonna have what Mr. Bernard had," and it was excellent.
Chef special, I tell her, I never know what I'm getting, but it's always good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next item on our agenda is a long list of bids and donations, um, and the first one, it's listed, is a hundred dollars from Kitty's Restaurant.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a hundred dollar donation from Kitty's Restaurant. Sorry, to support the proposed improvements to athletic facilities at the North Reading Middle School, High School.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve, um, this is with gratitude.
Wanna vote on that one?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, I'm, I'm, with gratitude.
All right, uh, yeah, are there any comments on that?
I just wanna mention, we got a bunch, there were a bunch of donations tonight related to the irrigation and sod project at the new school fields.
That, that's the project, I think these are earmarked.
There are many of these, yeah.
There's, they're associated with that, yes. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Um, second is Frank Prusak Painting. Mister Chairman-
Hundred dollar donation.
Move to approve a hundred dollar donation from Frank J. Prusak Painting to support the proposed improvements to the athletic facilities at North Reading Middle School, High School.
All is in favor?
Aye.
A second. Julie seconded. We gotta process that.
Do we get a second?
Yeah, Julie seconded.
Yeah, Julie's gonna second it.
They're not doing very well. Aye.
Aye. Aye. I think we're all in favor.
It was unanimous.
Yes.
Uh, the next one is Dooley and Mason Realty Group, two hundred dollars to support proposed improvements to the athletic facility.
Mister Chairman, move to approve a, a, accept with gratitude a two hundred dollar donation from Dooley and Mason Realty Group to support the proposed improvements to the athletic facilities at North Reading Middle School, High School.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Next is North Shore Printing, Inc., two hundred dollars to support proposed improvements to the athletic facilities.
Mister Chairman, move to approve a two hundred dollar donation from North Shore Printing, Inc., to support the proposed improvements to the athletic facilities at North Reading Middle School, High School.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Next is Mr. and Mrs. Ronald Kern, three hundred dollars to support improvements to the athletic facilities at North Reading Middle, High School.
Uh, move to accept with gratitude a three hundred dollar donation from Mr. and Mrs. Ronald Kern to support a proposed improvements to the athletic facilities at North Reading Middle School, High School.
Second.
Very generous donation.
All is in favor?
Aye. Ron goes way back with, uh-
Soccer.
-North Reading youth soccer and still referees-
Yeah.
Fifteen, twenty games a, a week in the, in the season, so, um, thanks a lot, Ron, and Nancy.
And next is from Grafik de France Company and Kind Contributions, a hundred daily planner books, North Reading High School.
Move to accept with gratitude a hundred daily planner books, uh, as an in-kind contribution from Grafik de France Company, um, for the planner books to the North Reading High School, estimated value of three hundred dollars.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Next is China Cuisine, uh, Inc., a thousand dollars to support improvements at the athletic facilities at North Reading Middle, High School.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, move to approve with gratitude a hun-, a thousand dollar donation from China Cuisine, Inc., to support the proposed improvements to the athletic facilities at North Reading Middle School, High School.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. The next is Bachelor School Parent Association, eighteen hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents for two projectors and two mounting brackets.
Mister Chair, move to accept with gratitude a donation of eighteen hundred and seventy-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents from the Bachelor School Parent Organization for two projectors and two mounting brackets.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And next is, uh, North Reading Middle School Hornet Productions, in-kind contribution of, uh, storage container to be used for theater, store, theater props and equipment, estimated value of sixty-five hundred dollars.
Mister Chairman, move to accept with gratitude an in-kind contribution of a storage container valued at sixty-five hundred dollars, said contribution from the North Reading Middle School Hornet Productions.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And last is Mr. and Mrs. Douglas Carey, in-kind contribution in defense of North Reading Middle School, High School, in the area between their personal home property and town property, uh, located at the tennis court, estimated value of sixty-five hundred dollars.
Mister Chairman, move to accept an in-kind contribution of a fence valued at sixty-five hundred dollars to be installed at the middle, at the middle school, high school complex, uh, adjacent to the tennis courts and behind the property of the Carries, um, said donation made by Mr. and Mrs. Douglas Carey.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Question on this, do, do we need to sign this agreement tonight?
Take a, is it required the signature of everybody? It looks like it.
It has, it has a slot for the selectmen and for the school committee, yes.
Yeah.
And, and I think we probably ought to have a separate, uh, vote for that.
Right.
So, is there a motion for, uh, accepting this memorandum?
I move to approve the license agreement between, actually, would we approve that or the town approve that?
It's both, both bodies, the selectmen and the school committee.
I move to approve the license agreement between the school committee and the, and Douglas and Mary Carey related to the construction of a fence on, behind the, uh, high school property, uh, behind the school, high school property-
Mm-hmm.
-separating the Carries' property from the school property.
A second. Just, just for the record, this fence will be on school property, that's the whole purpose of the memorandum, I understand.
And this has been reviewed and approved by council, correct?
Council drafted it-
Yes.
-memorandum of agreement, yes, and Michael Gilberto and I, um, the town administrator and I, did a conference call with him to review that prior to it coming to you.
Okay.
And for further information, the, the reason that this is on school property and not on their property is because of, uh, a, a number of large trees that are-
Correct.
-essentially on the line.
Correct.
Could always cut them down.
I don't think that's a good idea.
I think that's counterproductive.
I wouldn't recommend that, Jerry.
No more trees.
No.
I, it's made and seconded?
Yes.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
And again, Mister Chair, thank you to all the people that have donated, um, particularly, you know, there's some very generous donations across the, uh, the-
Amen.
-board there, but the ones that came in for the high school facilities is very well appreciated, yeah.
And we'll get into more details when we do the athletic facilities, uh-
No, we'll give you an update.
Right, but it, I wanna second Jerry's-
We have, uh-
Nice, nice response from people.
Subcommittee updates, uh, policy subcommittee met on August third, Mr. Webster and Mrs. Embriana provide an update.
We already discussed, that was the, um, the policy related to the meal program.
That's all you did?
That's all we did. Sorry, Mister Chair.
That was good, that was good work.
Finance planning team met on August ninth, and, uh, we, I guess Mr. Bowers and Mr. Benazio will provide an update, uh, you have some-
I'll, I'll call the superintendent to, uh, supporters too, but we did talk about projected revenues coming up for the next fiscal year, and as usual, and responsibly so, uh, the chairman and the, uh, town administrator and the finance director for the town, um, are very conservative about the projections, the revenue projections, so I think it's, uh, something we have to be conscious of. Um, Michael had already talked about the P-card thing, I think we talked about closing out or getting close to closing out the school project as well, and where we, where we're at, and I think we still have a little ways to go, we have meetings tomorrow, obviously, uh, and we're still trying to work with Gilbane and trying to come to a final figure as far as the closeout, but there's still some, uh, so, still some things that remain to be completed before we can do that, so I'd go back to Cliff and John about anything else that was-
I think, we, we talked a little bit about the little school roof, I think-
Yes.
-the finance planning team was looking for an update, and that project remains on budget, um, which was good nu-, was and is good news, there was a little bit of talk about the, um, lavatory facilities to be built, um-
No, the-
-at the, um, Turfield, Kenny Field, we talked a little bit about that, and I think, I think might, maybe a little different than we had been used to, at least in my experience, is we were asked to submit kind of a, a draft pro forma budget three fiscal years out, and I think we, we talked a little bit about that, and, you know, trying to give a, kind of, some early notices to what we think our needs might be, um, for a more extended period of time than, than we typically do.
Yeah, there was the performance contracting with Johnson Controls proposal-
Yes, yeah.
And, um, I think we received, um, kind of endorsement or consensus to have Johnson Controls come through both school-
Mm-hmm.
-and town buildings, look at what some type of large capital projects could be undertaken that would potentially lead to, um, energy savings that the town could entertain entering into the form of a performance con- contract with Johnson Controls, um, so, they had done a preliminary assessment on school and town, just kinda on paper, just looking at usage, um, information and, and data, and now, um, we authorize them to move forward with some onsite assessments to try to support that data and see if that, if, if the information will be the same, so I think, my understanding was that work took place at the end of last week into this week, and we'll just kinda wait for those findings.
But as always, it was a cordial and productive meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about a lot, it was good.
The school committee, yeah, the board of selectmen and the finance committee representatives.
I don't miss those, I had to get up too early for those meetings.
Yeah, they are already fifteen now.
Yeah, I know, that's really- Out of my, it's out of my wheelhouse.
Perhaps as important as anything is that, uh, we're, we're looking at a, a continued bleak revenue, um, from the, from the state.
Right. Big story in the Globe today.
Uh, serious issue. Uh, SSBC, uh-
We talked that out, didn't we discuss?
Pretty much.
I, I would say again, we're, we're continuing to work with, um, Gilbane and, uh, PMA indoor, would you, to try to close out the project, I think the two major issues that remain for us are landscaping and the drainage right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, move forward, trying to get those things resolved.
We're happy. HVAC is still there, but-
Well, that's-
-moving along, and hopefully the repairs are made by Iomonte on the coils-
Yeah, that, that's scheduled for this week, um, yeah, the HVAC, we've had some-
Yeah.
-good, good progress this summer, working with some, the contracted services-
Right.
-you all endorsed in, in regulating that, so-
As we mentioned earlier-
I've always seen the savings of that.
As we mentioned earlier too, we have to, uh, finish the AV training as well.
Right.
Yes.
So that has to be done. But we're getting there.
So this contractor coming in to work on the HVAC system, is this kind of the end of?
There was something that was-
This, this, these were repairs-
Right.
Needed to be made.
Right, but we're assuming this could be the end?
Good question, Julie, I think there may be a couple of issues remaining, uh, but-
But this is one of the, this is one of the big ones, yeah, this is-
This is a significant one, right.
Pretty much the end.
Right. We're, we're working down on the, on the punch list.
Yeah.
And the good news on this is that it, it was damaged, so it was covered by insurance.
Insurance, right.
So there's no, no out-of-pocket, and in fact, the contractor agreed to come back and do it-
Correct.
-for the insurance.
Same contractor that installed the whole system, we thought that was a prudent move to-
Yes.
It really probably wasn't an installation-
No.
-mistake, it was a somewhat of a, um-
It's a combination.
Winter-proofing mistake type of thing, yeah, so.
All right, uh, maybe, um, athletic facilities-
Athletic Subcommittee?
Athletic Facilities Committee, couple of things, we, um, we'll go, we, we meet tomorrow to go into detail, we opened the new bids, uh, we went out to bid a second time, which was what the August ninth meeting really focused on, in trying to raise additional money, um, and we're happy in that we actually got a low bid that was approximately seven thousand dollars lower than the low bid the last time around, um, it looks like we're about eighteen thousand out of whack, somewhere between eighteen, twenty thousand, um, however, we, the way the bid was set up, we're going to move ahead with the irrigation part of the program, once Michael Connelly, um, is checking references right now, he's been in contact with the, uh, company that had the low bid, but we have not awarded the bid yet, um, the bid was a hundred and forty-one thousand plus, correct?
Correct.
And we have about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, we're quite confident we can pick up the eighteen thousand needed to complete the entire project. The other item Mr. Bernard touched on is the, um, uh, restroom facilities at Kenny Field, the bids for the planning and design are scheduled to come in this Thursday.
Correct.
Um, and then once those bids have come in, we, fifty thousand was approved, um, by town meeting for that project, for the design and, and planning.
Yeah, and that's gonna be, there's gonna be a warrant article on-
Right, once we get the-
Warrant for town meeting.
Right, the plan is to look at three options, we, we want the, the, the company that comes in to look at the planning and design, current use, use of the current storage facilities, we're working those to become restrooms, which would then require a building to be constructed, constructed for storage, um, building a new restroom facility, or building a new restroom plus concession stand.
I think we've had nine designers actually show interest in the-
Have taken out the paperwork.
-project, taken out the work, yeah.
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 I have a, one question about that, I was down there a lot-
Yeah.
-for soccer this weekend, where would the new bathroom cons-
Oh-
-potentially concession stand?
Well, that would, that would, I mean, that's what part of the planning and design's gonna be, but when we've looked at it, it, the sense, the place that makes the most sense to us is where the current concession stand is-
Right.
-to tear that down.
Right, that's the only place it looks like.
That'll be part of this proposal, I think, so we had to locate-
I know some people have also talked about, you could put it on the other side on the baseball field, I don't know if that would work, but that's like the only place I could see.
Centrally, centrally located, it's going to be down there.
Exactly, exactly.
I think, I think it's fair to say that's the site we would be looking at unless someone told us that it's not the best site for it, but that's where...
And that's okay site, like with the town?
Yeah, there's, there's gas and water at that site.
Right, there's electricity too.
Electricity, yeah.
And it's, and it's near the wastewater area as well.
Right, it's near the pump for the current restrooms that are in the team rooms.
Facilities are there.
So, I think that probably wraps up, I was, I will say that at the, we discussed the raising funds for the, for the sod irrigation project, there was a lot of input from members of some of the various youth sports programs in town, and we did, we sent out a letter to about 50 or 60 businesses, and then Rita Mullen sent out a letter to alumni, and then there was a letter in the paper, there was a picture in the paper. To be honest, I think we've raised a phenomenal amount of money in about six months for this project.
And I think the selectmen are still up in the air as to whether or not they're going to put a holder on the warrant to maybe deal with this, so deal with the balances.
I think they put a placeholder, but they haven't agreed to put an item on the warrant yet.
So that's still up in there, I know Mike Prisco's pushing it.
I have communicated with Selectman Prisco, letting him know what the bid was, and letting him know what, what the dollar difference is, where we're at right now, and he was appreciative of that and said, you know, he'd continue to push for it.
I mean, our goal is really to get this done in the fall.
Right, if we get it done in the fall, then the, the fields can be used 100% in the spring. If we have to wait till the spring to put in the sod, then that's going to, we won't be able to, we might not even be able to play softball there in the spring, we need to, so that's why we want to get it done in October, by middle October.
Yep, and that would be the timeline, timeline under the terms of the proposals that we received, was to have substantial completion by mid-October.
So were the selectmen willing to fund the difference, is that...
We don't know, it's kind of a, again, Mr. Prisco is, is supporting it, he's trying to get them to, to get on board.
They did agree to a placeholder on the warrant, but they did not agree to put, to definitely put an item on the warrant requesting the funds.
If you want to get, get the project done by mid-October, it's going to be a little tight on the...
Well, right, I mean, we have to still look at other areas of funding, and there are still things, there are additional things we need to purchase for that site, including soccer goals and...
But those are secondary.
Right, but I'm saying that we still need to, we still need to raise the funding, however, if we get the indication, the, the warrant will have to be completed in September, and if, if they do put that, put an item on for the difference or for a certain amount of money, I'm quite confident it would pass at, at town meeting.
We also have a meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 with, with the athletic facilities committee, so that we're going to get the word out to how much money we need and see if we can find a way to get it as soon as possible.
Correct.
Anything further from the athletic facilities committee?
Nope.
Okay, how about the athletic subcommittee met on August 23rd?
Mel's already covered very well the first item on our agenda that day, which was the facilities at Arthur Kenny Field. We talked about the high school fall sports signups, at the time there were 312 athletes signed up, that was on August 23rd, John, you've updated us on that.
It's over 350 today.
Over 350, and that's high.
That's unbelievable.
That could be the highest since I've seen it.
I believe, and I don't know, but I know at the beginning of the week, I think we had more than 60 players signed up for football.
I think it was almost 70, it was 68.
Which is a huge, huge number.
Soccer was very large out there today, when I went...
Both boys and girls, boys and girls?
Yeah, big, big numbers.
Dave Johnson, our athletic director, continues to pursue the cooperative ski team with Havil High School, that's in the works, in progress, I don't think it's been signed, sealed, delivered yet, but it's in progress. We have a deal on the girls' ice hockey team, it's a co-op team with Peabody and Linfield, and I think we're going to go into another year with that particular agreement.
Right.
So they'll continue to play in that Peabody, Linfield, North Reading team. The, obviously the wrestling team continues to work the co-op program with Linfield. The, let me see, athletic facility, we talked about that, field maintenance, I think the irrigation system that we have on the baseball field is up and running and working efficiently.
Yes, it is.
I think you can see some of the results of that out there when you look at it. Again, the field facilities maintenance that, for the athletic fields, is a cooperative, collaborative effort between the, the town and the school department, and it works out pretty well between Marty and, Marty Tilton and Wayne, working together on that. We talked about getting the lights on the tennis courts, we have the lights, we're talking about getting a, a timer installed, and I think John's working with a contractor to do that.
The last, the last date we had on that, Mr. Vannazia, was, was Thursday, right? September 1st?
Correct.
Yeah, so I think it's on or around that date, and actually, I, I sent an email to Wayne this afternoon, just to see me tomorrow about the language for, we're going to have some signs.
And Marty was also working, was, was Marty going to talk to make sure that, because one of the things is we want to make sure that it can be turned on but not be on, be off here, right?
Correct, right, that's right.
So, I don't know if you want to go and just spend a minute explaining exactly how it works, right, yeah.
Sure.
I thought the community might be interested, I think it's important.
I agree. So essentially what we're, what we're hoping to achieve and what we think we can achieve is that the, the, the town could set the, the lighting system up at the tennis courts, that the lights would be on if someone wanted them to be on until 9:30, so they would always shine, turn off at 9:30, but they wouldn't always be on until 9:30, it's only if someone were to go over and activate them through this system that we're hoping to have installed sometime, you know, on or around September 1st. So for example, if someone were to go out now, and it's not light enough to play tennis, and they want to activate the lights, they would hit this button on this new system, and it would activate the lights for a period of time that we designate, 30 minutes, 45 minutes, something like that, 60 minutes. So it being 7:30, that would, you know, at the end of that period, you might have to hit it a second time, but if that window exceeded the 9:30 time slot, they would automatically shut off at 9:30. So for the neighborhood and for just, you know, kind of common courtesy, if you will, whatever, it would always be a 9:30 shut off.
We've had a high level of community activity at the tennis courts, and we still afford them, particularly in the fall and the spring.
When we left my office to come down here tonight, it was busy, you know, they gave a ton of use.
So one question on that, are we going to, I think we have to obviously keep a close watch on the cost, we've estimated it may cost, Marty Tilton has estimated around $30 an hour, I think it's $50 an hour down here.
Correct.
Are we going to make that available every night, or will we lock the door, will, will some nights it won't be?
I wasn't thinking of that, I was thinking...
I guess as long as we keep a close watch on the cost, I mean...
Yeah, and, and we will do that, you know, we, we get a monthly report for our electric use, which has been very good, actually at this campus, it's been very good. Obviously, when the, we, you might remember last year, after, you know, after, in the fall, before, just before the winter season, we, we closed them, so they, you know, they wouldn't be on for, you know, a period of whatever, five, five or six months, whatever that time is, but...
I guess the question is, Mike, Mike, would this come right in, would just, this would just be part of our, the electric bill for the high school?
It would, yeah, it would be probably on a separate meter that we would get billed for as part of our...
Okay, so you, it would be separated out, so we could see exactly how, okay.
That's my anticipation.
I'll say this too, last year we only did it once, I think they may do it more this year, but in the spring, we had a dual meet with the boys and the girls tennis team playing Austin Prep on the same night under the lights, and there was a huge crowd there, really worked out well, it was really nice, yeah.
Beautiful course.
So...
John, will we have anything as far as informing the public of this availability?
Yes, and I, and I, this is, you know, the, yes, and the, the, the reason I was waiting on having the signs made, because the signs are going to speak to how someone could operate the lights, and we weren't exactly sure on what the system was going to be, that we would have installed, and if it could be done, and, so I wanted to wait until we got...
I'm just thinking like, you know, something for the transcript or something?
Yeah, and, and, you know, I think, I think, yeah, I think that's, you know...
Okay, the subcommittee's schedule is, the SSBC meeting is scheduled for tomorrow at 5:30 here, athletic facilities committee is tomorrow at 6:30 in the superintendent's office.
Won't that be here?
It is, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I think that's, that's my, sorry.
The finance planning team is meeting September 12th at 8:15 in the superintendent's office, athletic subcommittee on September 21st at 12:30 in the superintendent's office, and the NORCAM board of directors meeting is September 22nd at 7:00 PM in NORCAM's office. Minister of Report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so a few things, I mentioned just a little bit ago about the little school roof, so I'm, I'm happy to tell you that the, the work continues in earnest on that project, I think that the, the, the most important thing to note is that the project does remain on schedule and it remains on budget. The, I think it's fair to say that we are looking at a late September, early October substantial completion date, the, the project has gone, I would say, has largely gone very well, Michael and I have visited, we were there this morning.
Yes.
We talked with the project manager, it's, you know, there's been a few little glitches along the way, nothing I would say that's terribly alarming, you know, for example, some vibration today caused a smoke detector to go off, you know, those kinds of things. We've had some, some ceiling light fixtures dislodged because of electrical. We did, we did, as some of you know, because I spoke to you about it at the end of last week, find some, and this was not unexpected, some, some dampness in what they call the gypsum decking, once they removed kind of the, the exterior, the, the top layer of roof material, but we got some good news on, on the remedy for that, and that work actually started today, it started right away. So there have been a few little hiccups, but I, I really, nothing that is all that significant, but I do think it's important for people to know that, you know, it hasn't been, you know, 100% smooth, but it's been pretty darn close, quite honestly, we have, I'm very impressed with the level of communication from the project manager, we, we get literally a daily report with photographs, our custodial staff has been working diligently with them to, you know, keep the building maintained through their summer cleaning, around, you know, around some obstacles that present themselves, but again, nothing that I don't think has been unexpected. And again, project remains on schedule and on budget, all along we knew that there would be some construction going on in September when, when students and staff returned to school, and that, that maintains, you know, to be the, the case, but, you know, the light is at the end of the tunnel, so to speak.
Parking lots will be available for the first day of school?
Parking lots, we don't anticipate any, any snags, company's been very good to work with, Stanley Roofing.
Yeah, they got a lot of guys working over there, that's...
Yeah, you know, I'm glad you said that, because it's in my report too, they actually, they did work on one Saturday, August 20th, they've got as many as 13 people now, working on the crew, they, they are, my, my sense is, my impressions are, my belief is, that any building project meetings I've gone to, or conversations I've had, they are extremely understanding of what we're up against with it being a school, and it's been very nice to, to have that level of respect for, you know, understanding their, their children, their staff, you know, the minimal noise interruptions and such, they've been extremely understanding of that, so, and, and to try to achieve as little disruption as possible, they have worked on a Saturday, they've added people to the crew, so that's been a good thing. I included in your packet, our, our digital learning coordinator, Dan Downs, has, has really been a very good resource for us in digital learning, and I attached for you a couple of documents regarding a, a symposium that's going to be hosted on September 23rd at the offices of Amazon in Cambridge. This is a, really a very high quality, proud moment for North Reading, to be a part of this, if you look at the last page of what I provided with you, and you look at some of the districts across the country that are part of the Go Open initiative, you'll see very few in Massachusetts, and the North Reading Public Schools is, is now one of them, and we are the, the co-sponsor, the, the co-host of this technology symposium. I will be going, it's on a Friday, September 23rd, to learn a little bit more about educational resources, technology resources in education, it's really a nice thing for our district, and, and Dan Downs is the, is the person that really linked us up, so I, I think it's an important thing for, for you as school committee members to be aware of, and for the community too.
I think one of the interesting things about it too is the path it's pursuing using open source software could down the line save money for school districts.
Correct, yeah, the idea is, my understanding of it is that there's, there's a lot of available resources that people collaborate around, and there is ultimately a budget, budgetary savings, and a lot of it's very, very up to date, I mean, in my, my world with technology, when I hear Amazon, I think, you know, that's big, that's big stuff, so, so good, good for our digital learning department.
John, I just had a question, what does it entail as far as North Reading hosting it?
It means that we are a, a district that has been identified as one that has something valuable to share in, in our work in digital learning.
So will our digital learning people be there?
No, it's just, it's just through Dan, it's through, just through Dan Downs. And, and like I said, I'm going to go, I think Patrick, Dr. Daley's going to join me too, more in support of him, but also to learn and see, you know, I think it's important for us to kind of have a frontline view into what some of the resources might be that we can bring back to our district too. There's no cost to our district to be a, a part of this, it's really, it's a win. The other attachment to the, my report is just, I, I know some of you received this electronically, but I left, you know, provided you with a copy of my summer newsletter. I, I would like to just take a quick moment about the opening of school, kind of a couple of things around that, you know, I really am very, very grateful to all of the work that gets done in the summer, you know, for, for all of the years that I've worked in education, and particularly around the years that I have been an administrator, of which I think I'm going on, I, let's see, 14, I think it's 22 out of my 30 years, the question gets asked a lot, you know, what do you do in the summer? You know, it's always a very hard question to answer, because there, it's just the myriad issues that come up, and the, the, just the normal day-to-day things that get interrupted, but it's all good fun work to, to ready schools for opening day, and, and I can tell you confidently, and I can tell the community that we, we are very, very close to being fully ready, and we certainly will be ready on opening day. And there's a lot of people that, that contribute to that, and it's, it's custodial staff, buildings and grounds staff, we get wonderful cooperation from our town agencies, public safety personnel, Department of Public Works collaborated with our buildings and grounds people on a project at the little school, with the removal of a, a, a kind of an outdated and unsafe playground piece of equipment, as I said, public safety, people come in voluntarily and give their time over the summer, all of our administrators, we just, we have a very, very good team of people working to, to quote unquote, get the job done, and I'm, I'm very grateful for that, and again, I can confidently tell you that we will have a, all of our schools ready for, for arrival of staff and students on the first official day of, of school, September 7th, but just a reminder, we do have a professional development day for staff on this Thursday, September 1st, and then our open, our traditional opening day ceremony with staff on September 6th, I included that in my report too, and I would just like to remind you all that that, we will have, kind of our, our kind of like, just to kind of welcome back coffee and such at 7:30 with the formal program beginning at 8:30, so I'm hoping you can all, all be there, Mr. Bowers, you'll address the staff.
I'm prepared.
Okay, very good.
I've been working on my, my volume of material.
Excellent.
I was going to go, but now I'm reconsidering.
There's only about 60 or 70 pages.
Excellent, they'll be happy to hear from you than, probably more than I, than they hope to hear from me, I don't know. So just a reminder, school opens for grades, students in grades one through 12 on, on Wednesday, September the 7th, we will have pre-kindergarten and kindergarten orientation on that same day, as well as Thursday, September 8th, with our kindergarteners and pre-kindergarteners starting on Friday, September 9th. And that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Good.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, oh, I think you have an under correspondence, yes you do, one more for you. The, the Diamond Club, Scott Ellis had asked me to share with the committee, the Diamond Club is hosting a golf tournament, first annual golf tournament, on Friday, October 7th, at the Hillview Country Club. And as you all know, they are very good friends to our school community through sponsorship, donation and such, in-kind contributions, and so I was glad to, to tell Scott that I would share that all with you.
Thank you very much.
He's done some great work at the baseball field, and Scott eventually has done some great work.
He does, he's very, very, very kind.
Future business, we have a, a regular meeting on September 12th at 6:30 right here, September 26th, regular meeting here at 6:30, October 11th, it's a Tuesday, 6:30 regular meeting here, and October 17th at 6:30, we have a town meeting, before-town meeting, meeting in the superintendent's office, and we have a need for an executive session, do I have a motion on that?
Yes, I'll make a motion to discuss, we're not going to hear the grievance, we're going